All righty, good evening, everyone. Called a special meeting to order. It is Monday, 6:03 PM, and January 23rd. This is just on council procedures, so it's got no real agenda to it. It was Councilman Henkin, you asked for it, so why don't I turn it over to you to start, and then we'll go from there.
Very good. Okay, so hopefully this will be a brief one, we'll get everybody out of here quick. So, the reason I asked for this meeting, just to get right to the point, is we have two new members. Councilwoman asked to have some town hall meetings on January 30th, so not time to debate it, and I saw the emails going back and forth between the city attorney and the city manager, and everybody had an opinion, so one thing I do is, I don't let things stay out there in ambiguity. Bring everybody together and figure it out. Now, here's the situation we have. We've had a policy, I think, back since, I want to say it was 2005, maybe, when somebody else was up here, who was having town hall meetings, or had a few...
Wanted to.
Wanted to. Had one, and was bypassing the rest of the city council, and making policy, and all kinds of stuff. Not that that's what was your intent, but we decided back then that we would have a policy, that when we did town hall meetings, or any engagement of the public, where we wouldn't be talking business, that we would all be together with the city staff, and they come out much better that way than one of us doing it on our own. So that is our current policy that we have. So, I throw this out for discussion, are we going to change that policy? And go in a different direction. But, Councilwoman's emails brought up a lot of things that she wanted to do, and if we're going to do them, then we have to bless it. Because right now, that's not the policy, to go have town hall meetings, one-on-one with the public. And frankly, you know, when this was tried 13, 14 years ago, it was a disaster, and that's why we changed it. So, I just throw that out there for discussion, if we want to change it. I don't have a problem at all, as a matter of fact. I like when we engage with the public, it's fine, but one-on-the-whole-city gets a little tough. And sometimes people misconstrue what it is we're all trying to do, so... But if we're going to change the policy, I think we need to have an open discussion on where we are, because right now, that is not the policy. And I saw the city attorney, city manager, all opine that it probably is not the best thing to do, but that doesn't mean we can't change it, if that's what everybody wants to do. So, I think we need to all weigh in on that, because those were some tough emails, to try to figure out where we go, and I didn't see us getting anywhere, you know? You were in limbo, we're in limbo, we have a policy for, you know, 12, 13 years that we've been following, so if we're going to change it, let's talk about it, so...
I think it's a good policy.
That's what we have.
And it wasn't my intent, so make sure everybody knows, that was not my intent, to have a one-on-one town hall meeting, trying to represent anybody. I just want to make some cookies, get together. When you're campaigning, you kind of go around and people talk to you. And you say, "Hey, I'm going to show up at such and such a place, if you come too, maybe we'll talk about some stuff, and maybe we'll just be friends." That was more the idea than anything else. Originally, I thought, "Well, I'll just invite them to my house," which is not handicapped accessible. So, that's how the idea of having it some other place sort of happened, and make it a little bit less... You know, just want people to feel like they can approach us in a way that doesn't involve having to fill out a public comments form. Be real formal, so there's got to be a middle ground mechanism to do that, maybe just not having it City Hall. I don't know what you guys think.
There is a mechanism. Don't advertise it. I don't have to advertise it. I'll be able to do it.
What if I just stick a little thing on Facebook and say, "Hey, I'm going to show up"?
Then that's...
Then we're back to this, then that's...
Well, let me address that, because in your email, and believe me, this is not a give-you-a-hard-time meeting, this is to trying to figure this all out, so...
A little bit, right?
It's really not, so...
Hazing the new people.
Okay, so...
Don't worry, Bob will have his chance.
So, it's really not, but let me just do it, because he got...
I'm sorry.
The 2005 policy, though, I have been living at home, just like, "I know somebody else who tries to..." She goes, "No way, no way."
Uh...
You railed against it. I can pull out some newspaper article, and it's written, "It's that you wrote."
Well, if it is that...
You railed against it.
If it is that demeanor, then yes. That's... Yeah. Yeah. That is not what I have.
No, so here's the deal, so the emails that went back and forth referenced a Facebook event, referenced, quote, "your list," and quote, "we ought to steer clear of where you are." Right then and there, that stopped me right there, "We got to fix this." Now, if you're going to have a Facebook event, then, and you have a list, all of this becomes the public record. We can't have this, "Oh, by the way, let the rest of the city hear it through the grapevine" thing. You can't do that. So, I'm trying to keep...
I want you guys to know that I didn't mean it in a very formal way.
I know what you meant.
I don't want to defest...
I will just say this, when you... Listen, you've been here a long time, so has Bob, but I will tell you, it takes you a little while to figure out what's going on for your first few months, anyway. At least it did for me. It took me six months, a year, for I started to figure out what was going on. All I want to get out here, and believe me, I engage the public all the time. I do stuff at night, somebody calls me, I'll go visit them, I'll go talk to them, kind of like what Keith does, you know? I don't hold, you know, multiple meetings, but if a citizen needs it, but what I am trying to get out here tonight is to keep the way the citizens perceive us as we are one. We're not single-member districts, we are one body, we've always spoke together. Not to say you shouldn't have this, go have them, but I'm just saying, when you have meetings on your own, and you have the public, and you don't have, you know... I'll give you an example, sometimes someone will ask us a question, we'll answer the question, and then we'll get a little, for lack of a better word, color commentary from the city attorney, from the city manager, and when citizens leave, they feel like, "Okay, I just heard from the entire city, their leadership, their elected officials, their administrative staff, their CEO, the city..." And I feel better about it. Sometimes when you go on by yourself, it just will send the wrong message, and don't think citizens won't hold you to everything that you said in those meetings. So, listen, if it's the decision of this body, and it's fine, I have no issue with it, but we have a policy right now that we've been following since 2005, that we don't have any of these meetings without our staff and us, because we speak as one. Or advertise.
Advertise.
Yeah, advertise one, so I just want to know what you all think. You needed an opportunity, you couldn't go on with these emails, you weren't getting anywhere. They were in the middle, and I'm just trying to figure it all out, you know? Everybody needs to come together and be fine. We realize we have two new members, three have been following this policy for a long time, as did your predecessors followed it. So, we just got to figure out, everybody got to weigh in.
I can count on one hand, number of emails I've responded to from other council members, so don't expect an answer, because I think it's a safe place.
Yeah, no, we're not supposed to be... There was...
A misunderstanding on my part. So, it sounds like from our conversation with just me and Mr. Groot, there is a middle ground to be had, perhaps not at City Hall. Or were you saying, "Talk to everybody first"?
Oh, I'm saying...
Figure it out here.
Figure it out here.
Okay.
And, well, City Hall's clearly an issue of whether or not the council wants a town hall by any member allowed to be present, occur here. And then the second issue is what Councilwoman W. Mary Henkin was talking about, is whether town halls are desired individually...
Anyway. Yeah. Well, Mike, you responded... You were the only one who did respond, and obviously, newbie mistake, it's fine. You get one pass.
No, my thought is, is, you know, I like the idea of engaging the public, and, you know, in a less formal setting, but to me, I felt like it should, or I feel like it should be noticed, so that additional members could join you. And, you know, whether you want to attend or not, that's, you know, that's your prerogative, but at least it's noticed, so that other members could attend, and we're not breaking any kind of sunshine laws.
And I've discussed this issue with anybody in this council, or any other council, when they talk about town halls, that becomes... There's the policy issue about whether or not the body wants to allow them in a particular location, or generally, anyway. But once they are allowed, the next issue always arises is, "Well, I want to go too, and I want to go too," and before you know it, this is what happened in Lake Elm, and finally they said, "No," because before you do it, everybody was there, the entire city commission was there, and so you have a meeting, really.
But that's why I said it should be noticed.
Well, but...
But the point is to make it...
That is, and barter is so good, and management's so good, and I have used you guys as an example to many other cities. Do you publish notices? I sent 50 notices, I think, to the bar game, about two members maybe at this or that, or a city walk, or whatever, all sorts of things, that you noticed. Those are Band-Aids, those are intended to just, in the event you get, somebody gets boxed in...
Has to make a comment?
...is covered. But it's not intended to really have a meeting. There's your Band-Aid approaches, to cure a potential problem. I mean, I know that if mayor's asked to speak at an event, and somebody else wants to go, and somebody from a public relations association A comes up to you and says, "Well, what do you think of that"? Well, it's difficult for you or anybody to say, "I can't talk about it, because this really isn't me." And that's what those notices are to help with, is, in the event you just have to say something where it'll be rude, but at least it's noticed. Is that what you're saying? But it's not intended to have a meeting.
Right.
To allow a meeting.
But we've had town hall meetings before.
We have, yeah. We're always there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we've done them. And plan next month.
Well, that's the state of the city.
But what we did is, we turned that into a town hall meeting.
Okay.
Because generally what we do is, you know, when you look at the charter, and the mayor, and the ceremonial items, and the State of the City, I mean, that's just something the mayor's office is supposed to do, but when we first started doing them publicly three years ago, because I used to just go and do them to the chambers, the HOAs, and, you know, and I still do that when the HOAs invite me out to their annual meeting. You know, I'll go out there, give them the State of the City, let the neighborhoods blast me for, you know, whatever it is they want to blast us for, I blame it all on you, and I go home.
Right.
So, it's very simple. But, so, it was actually Steve's idea, that since we're going to have the State of the City, let's do the Q and A afterwards, because I go up there and I present, do the Q and A. Now, what we found is, the first time, the PowerPoint went, you know, way too long. The second time, it went a little better, so this time, it's going to be a little bit shorter. And then the hybrid of the Q and A came up of, okay, let's request some questions from those who may not want to attend, or maybe too bashful to speak. So, usually, it ends up happening after I run through the PowerPoint, which everybody will get a preview of once Tracy and I are done with it. I run through the PowerPoint, which is just policy, you know, it's anything that we voted on, and what we may be considering for the future. The five of us get up on the stage, and I sort of kind of try to allow the four of you to answer the questions, because I've done, you know, if I've been speaking for half an hour, they don't want to hear from me again, so, you know, I kind of just direct, you know, "Hey, we'll take your question," and then I go, "Okay, who wants to take it?" And, you know, we kind of bounce the questions back and forth. And over at Oviedo High School, because it went so long, not a lot of people hung around for questions, but we did end up having to eventually cut off questions, because the people who were left get to ask it a lot. Last year, over at the Event Center, actually, we got some good questions afterwards, I mean, not a lot, about 10 or 15 minutes worth of questions, and then, you know, everybody kind of dispersed. So, we do kind of do it at least once a year. Now, to answer your question, Bob, years back, when Jim was here, we had a traveling town hall meeting. And we used to go to different parts of the city, and do the town hall. And the first couple of ones that we did, I would say they were pretty well-attended, right? They weren't bad. Then it started to dwindle, you know, because you're having them once a quarter, and people get bored of it, you advertise it, nobody shows up. I mean, the last one we did, we did here in the council chambers, and I think, you know, 10, 15 people showed up. We did one for Kings... Oh, no, I did the one for Kingsbridge. I did Kingsbridge, the State of the City, in here, because their annual meeting always conflicts with our Tuesday night Martin Luther King meeting, because we have to move it. They have their annual meeting the second Tuesday of January, and that's our meeting, so that one was pretty well-attended. But, you know, the States of the City, you know, we got a couple hundred people coming out doing it. It's surprising. And this year, since they've gotten out on the advertising a little bit earlier, and, you know, Tracy doing the social media this year, there could be even more, because she's bounding away at it.
Well, can we go back to, you know, try and, you know, maybe, you know, one or two of quarterly, traveling...
We have two...
Dog and Pony Show?
I'm not into Dog and Pony Shows, I want to figure out, how can I change the format of whatever I'm trying to do, of having cookies, to not have it count as a public meeting, or whatever?
No, that's counterproductive to being a team player. I mean, with all due respect, I mean, you're elected now, you're part of the team, we're not single-member districts. You know, if you were elected from a single-member district, where only that district elects you, and you wanted to have a little town hall meeting, or...
What if I call up seven people, and I say, "These are the seven people who I think are..." Don't tell you. So if I don't tell you, I'm good, is that fine?
Don't advertise it.
No, no, no.
I call them up, and I say, "If you want to bring someone cool, let anybody know who you..." An opportunity for people to yell at me. I have been, there's been some 4-1 votes that people are upset at me about, and I need to get it out. Probably because I don't understand the reasoning behind it.
But Megan, why would you want to... Yeah, let me... I'm sorry, Keith. Why would you want to take that personally upon yourself, when...
Because, you know, there's nothing you have to do.
Okay, but I understand that, but what we preach around here, and we've preached for the last 10 years, is we're a team. The vote's over, the vote's done, we all agree or disagree, it doesn't matter, at the end of the day, the vote's what it is, and we all support it. I mean, that's the way life is now. It's not like it was, you know, 15 years ago, we had a mayor, 20 years ago, who, when she didn't agree with what we were doing, was writing letters to the editor. You know, that's not what we do here, that becomes counterproductive, because here's what happens. You start fighting up here, the trust is lost, staff shuts down, because we're not cohesive. Not that we have to be cohesive in our votes, just congenial, and nothing gets done, so that's up to you. I mean, you can do what you want.
What are the issues that you're hearing out there? Why are people mad about the golf course, are they mad about the charter school? What are people giving you a hard time about?
Oh, nothing in particular, but some people said, "I don't get why you would vote for the golf course." A lot are in favor of acquiring a golf course, just not the mayor, which he was done.
He just didn't like the way it was being financed.
That's all it is.
I don't think there was one of us who took it personally.
Okay, but it would be good if people still are hard for you, or just don't understand. If they want to show up...
You know what I tell people all the time?
Why don't you call up the Twin Rivers HOA guys, and say, "Hey, why don't we sit down personally," instead of trying to advertise it as a "I'll bring you..."
Well, I agree, but I just...
You know what I'll tell you? You know what I'll tell you?
But honestly, you should have a town hall meeting with us, or maybe get a flavor of it at the State of the City. They're not that bad, people don't bite.
You know what I'll tell you?
And quite frankly, everybody in the city likes to yell at me, so...
This is true.
You know what?
And I cover for everybody pretty damn well.
You know what, you guys, when you first come up here...
I don't mind, because we're a team.
I can remember when I first came up here, I'd get a lot of calls, and a lot of people would try to put me on the spot, "I need you to tell me what you're going to, how you're going to vote," and all this stuff, and I never really did that, but the one thing I've learned, and this goes for any type of politics, is you can't be all things to all people. You always got to vote from here, that has served me well for all these years, and you know what? You're never going to get 100% of the vote. You know what, we have people, there's a group of...
I try on Bill's Facebook page all the time, it doesn't work.
Well, as long as I can have coffee, and not say it has anything to do with the city, we're good. Because a couple times a year, I just... Okay, as long as that's...
You know what a lot of people do, a lot of people have these...
People are going to come, and they will talk about city stuff, so I want to like to keep it out there.
You know what a lot of people do, they have like go-to people in the city, they'll bounce stuff off, you know? Once in a while, I'll call up somebody, "Hey, what do you think of this? You know, how do you think of this?" One sitting right in the audience there. Talk to them all the time, call them up on the phone, "What's up?" You know, and have to notice it, get an idea. Get to your go-to people, call them up, Keith has town hall meetings all over the city, we just never know where they are.
They're friends.
Yeah, but you know, we giggle about things like that. Brian and I hold one every Friday at TJ's, because we have our standing lunch, everybody knows we're going to be there. So, we walk in, and, you know, we get, the first 10 minutes we're there are questions from folks, it's no big deal, you know, and everybody's respectful, and, you know, we sit down to eat, it's...
Yeah, when the food arrives, they...
Right, or, you know, once we're done, they ask us questions again. You know, Mondays, I'm always at Al's house for lunch, you know, so people, the ones at the bar, they're always there. I mean, they know I'm going to be there, so, and that happens.
I'm hyperparanoid, because I have a lot of licenses going on here, so I think the normal level of scrutiny that other people feel is heightened because of all the turn things. So, between the journalism and the attorney thing, I'm just like...
Listen, you had a...
I want to make sure that I do not...
And we don't, we're not trying to back into any corner, or get into any trouble.
I know, I know. As long as everything's...
I think if you're in part of all of Estes, you're...
Probably all right.
He has something called the hatchet law, or it's chasing him down. Hatchet?
And, you know, with me, the thing that was concerning me, when you said, "Well, I've got seven or eight," it's like, "Okay, I'll get you a conference room, no problem." But when you said, "I want to bring the public," your safety, then, that comes into my brain. How do I protect you? Because I want to keep you safe, you know, and when we were talking about, well, about having...
So, seven or eight?
Yeah, you know, when it's, well, if seven or eight, and we're, and I know where you are, you know, I can get people to you. But when we're talking about opening it up to the public as a whole, and so now, it's a group of people, and you, you know, I want Adele Coleman in the room with you, you know, I want myself in the room with you.
Yeah, that's a very good point, because, you know, years ago...
Very, very important.
I mean, you know, the only police officer that was in this chamber was the chief, and now there's, well, there's more, so just leave it at more. Nobody knows how many are here, but there's more, because, and it's not, not that we don't trust our public here in Oviedo, but unfortunately, what's happening in politics everywhere...
You know what's great? I'll tell you what, last Monday, I lost a 4-1 vote. You all want fees? I didn't want fees. People called me up, a guy called me from the Orlando Central, I picked up the phone, I told somebody, "Hey, Martin, what's up?" Started talking to him, I said, "Look, this is the way I feel." I said, "My other four compadres voted this way, I respect it, that's the way we're marching on, there's a fee now." I don't have to agree with it, but I think, as you go along, and there's so many issues coming, I mean, I like his idea, why don't we, if we all agree, why don't we have one of our old-fashioned town hall meetings, let's see how it goes right here, with the five stools, you know, maybe after the State of the City, and we'll do it. Not to say you can't...
Or do it at the Event Center.
Or do it at the...
We have this nice, beautiful facility.
Yeah, or do it at the Event Center, or whatever, but I just, I was trying to make you comfortable, when I see these emails going back, and these guys giving out the best advice that they've always given to new members, and even to ones who have been here a long time, who sometimes get stubborn, and they have to remind us what the rules are...
That would be me.
Yeah.
You haven't witnessed any of those yet, but you'll see, I could spank them.
You're, I could tell you, both of you, and both of them and us, we run the city, we know that, we're all going to have enormous say, but I will just tell you, I truly believe teamwork is where it's at, you know, at different levels of government, we see today certain people trying to run me, you know, run things on their own, and nothing ever comes out good when one person is giving a decision, including him, and I've told him this, too, and he doesn't do that, you know?
I got smacked down seven years ago, just six years ago.
He did. You were here. You know, so, we just want to, when we speak, one thing I can say, having you two up here is great...
And it was because I was going out to too many meetings, on my own.
We had two members up here who had great integrity, we have two new members who have great integrity, and we're trying to keep it, like Lonnie was just saying, he uses us as the example. We don't want to get into the fact, those days of 13 years ago, when certain members having meetings on their own, having these parties, and all this crazy...
I forgot about that thing with the hot dogs, that's right, he had the jumperoo thing, and he drank at the whole park or something, didn't he?
And he meant, and he meant well, but it just wasn't, it wasn't what we are, and I will just tell you, when you sit out there, and there's a whole audience of people, and there's a contentious issue, that's why, when I get up there, and it's time, we got a whole HOA, I try to speak to them like I'm one of them, and then I have the staff to back me up on facts and stuff like that, it just comes out better. Now, having said all that, if you want to go do all these things, Mr. Groot said it very well in his email, that's your choice, we can't stop you, but I thought it was important to at least come out here, I want to keep our policy, official policy, that when we have town hall meetings, that we're all together, that was my preference, but, not to say that you shouldn't do it, but what Mr. Cobb said, the safety of it, by yourself with people, and sometimes someone's... You're a smart girl, one of the smartest I've ever met, they're going to ask you a question, trust me, and you're not going to have the answer, and you might try to wing it, and then now...
Try to wing it, though.
Ah, yeah, that you want, that you want to.
But I'm just saying, you might give an answer that's not right, and...
You or I might do that, you won't do that.
I wouldn't wing it.
You just, it just comes out so much better, and I think the citizens appreciate it when they leave. Wow, I heard from all five of them, their staff...
One of the times, before you follow, you're going to have more questions, and you check this out, just don't ignore it.
And, you know, you mentioned in one of the emails flying back and forth, I mean, and I know I sound like a broken record, and you two are tired of hearing of it, they're tired of hearing it from me for two years now, that's why we have to do vision. That's what this all is, I mean, we got to get, and maybe we're not explaining right, or maybe I'm not explaining right what it is. I don't see visioning as being the five of us locked away in a room making a vision, because that's not a vision, we do that by the votes we take, that, you know, that's policy, that's different. I honestly see this visioning as more what CPH had in their proposal, where they're going to take all of our old capital improvement plans, review them, freshen them up, then let them go out to the public, not with us. I mean, we can go if we want, similar to what we did with Oviedo on the Park. Remember, while you were younger, did you...
In Seminole State, I wonder about that.
No, that was goal-setting, that wasn't the visioning, that was...
The origin, that was for the park itself, that was the...
Oh, People for Public Spaces.
Public, yes.
But didn't we do some of that here, too, with them? Remember, we had the round tables?
We did, we did.
Because Kindle was on that group with us.
We did, yeah.
But if you remember with Oviedo on the Park, what we did is, there were like sixty, seventy residents and stakeholders, you know, of all walks of life, the council didn't have a seat at the table. We used to just come in and it would-
Just sat around, listen.
Right, we'd just sit around, listen. We just, we would, we would sit on, on the chairs on the outside, we would come and go. Bob would order pizza every now and again, uh, well, he'd tip tax it, we used to. Bob ordered pizza at ten o'clock one night, but that's another story. While we were in, during our meeting and had it delivered. I think your dad was with us that night. Uh, yeah, but he didn't share, but anyway, uh, we would sit, just sit around and observe. And then Wade Trim brought it all back to us in a package. And then we had, what Brian, maybe two or three workshops amongst the members?
Something like that.
Something like that, it wasn't many, and they were pretty quick, hour, hour and a half, and we put the vision of Oviedo on the Park together. Because it's like, you know, Mike Roberto always says, "If you make the vision bigger than the council, it doesn't matter who sits here." So if you got the residents involved, and I'm looking at thinking a, a vision for the entire city for the next thirty years, whatever that may be, I, I don't know what it is. You've mentioned Historical Society, he, he's gonna mention, uh, things that, that he's gonna want, I know you've mentioned a couple, I'm sorry.
You did.
They don't stick out to me. Right, Keith, Keith wants to know the senior center what to do. He wants a cemetery, if I hear about it one more damn time, I just want somebody to find him five acres.
We need it.
We just, we're, we're heading towards three hundred, right?
There you go. Well, let me tell you something, if somebody don't find me five acres, we're gonna have a cemetery on that golf course, I'll just tell you that.
But if we, how to use the golf course, for instance, you brought that up at our meeting the other night. You know, the, the prior council has already set in motion what is going to be the short term use for the course. You know, it's to run it as a course, just keep it going as it is, because the, uh, you know, whether it's gonna stay a golf course, whether UCF is gonna jump on board, whether, uh, others may want to partner with us, we, we don't know, but, you know, you could have this incredible amenity as a course, it could turn out to be the biggest boondoggle in the world, in which case then we have three hundred acres. But what we should be doing is planning and visioning, okay, course first, what next? Yeah. And then we get the, you know, the big vision, like we have those on the, those are the goals, aren't they Brian? That are on the wall over there in the frame?
In the frame?
The ones in the frame.
Yes.
Those, those goals.
Right.
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan, that's what we did with those two generals. What were their names?
That was Herb.
Herb.
Right, and the very first time we did those is when Regina was around, we had Herb. And then we had Herb come back when Keith and Steve were here.
Right.
Right, and we went back to Seminole State.
That's what you remember, Seminole State, that, that, that was actually good. I liked that, that was actually good.
But that was strategic planning, that was council planning based on needs and, uh, capital improvement plans and goals. I, I'm looking at, and Brian, you're gonna explain this a lot better, cause you are the only one on this entire staff who's trained in visioning. I, I'm looking like a hundred thousand foot stuff, like, who remembers the postcard Brian wrote for Oviedo on the Park? Uh, send that thing out to the two members.
Okay.
I know you hate when I do that to you, but the postcard is very cool. Brian, Brian during, um, was the strategic planning, wasn't it, with Herb and Marla? Herb?
No, it was with Mike Roberto. It was, it was while we were doing the, the-
Was it?
Yes, it was Mike Roberto.
He tasked each table to write a postcard as if you were fifty years in the future, flying around Oviedo, writing it to your relatives at home. I mean, and, and it, what Brian wrote was actually very cool, because if you look at what he wrote and you look at what is here, it almost matches. Not quite, but it's close.
So we can blame you.
Yes. It was, it was, it was, and, 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 and this is no disrespect to, to Bill and his Facebook page and the folks who are on it, but, you know, everybody thinks this is, this is happenstance, this isn't happenstance. This was, this was strategic planning, goal setting, uh, envisioning on Oviedo on the Park, coming to fruition. This, this was put together, what you all see happening now is put together fifteen, sixteen years ago. You know, in infrastructure, infrastructure, yes, are we behind the eight ball? Absolutely, but there's state and county roads that run through us.
I would just say, like I said, cause I asked for this, I would just say, be very careful, go engage the public, speak to them, do whatever you have to do, I would say, take the advice of, of Lonnie and, and Brian-
Call up so many people, have cookies with them.
You know, hey, there's always go to people that you call up and you bounce stuff off, you know, uh, hey, what do you think of this? I do it all the time, but it just gets a little tough sometimes. I mean, we've really spent a long time building this reputation. One thing I think that most people would, would say, they may not agree, there's too many houses, they don't like this, but might be one or two people who are just completely wrong, but nobody ever accuses this group of ever being unethical or, or having a bad reputation, and that's the most important thing for me. So I was just telling you, your, your intentions are, are well meant, but I just think if we're together and the citizens hear it from all of us together, it works out better. Not to say that we can't be individual, the five nothing votes up there, some people don't like that. If it's five nothing, to me, that says, hey, we've all thought about it and we all feel strongly, but if we get three to two or four to one, hey, that's the way it is.
When, when do we talk about sign code?
Oh, I won't show up.
How long have you been up here now, ten years, twelve years?
Lose everyone four to one.
Everyone.
These guys want to have signs that are this big, and I said, "Bill, whatever you need is fine."
Everyone, and, and here's the funny part, is that he sits there as we're talking about it and just says, "I know I'm losing this four one, let's vote now."
You know?
Maybe not anymore though.
Hey, and just one thing that I want to mention, cause people say, "How come Hank is so hard on this cemetery?" Lady called me up a few years ago in the city, her sister passed away, very young. She's like, "I had a barrier in Castleberry, and I wanted a barrier here and I had no place." That's what started all, people always ask me, "Why are you so hard?" That's the thing, because-
You gotta join the Methodist Church.
Because we have a hos-
Or Baptist.
Right, so we have a hospital now. People are gonna pass away here and they want someplace to put their, to put their, their family.
Yeah, they manage that together over there.
So that's what, that's where that came from, you know, we, we, we're gonna have life here.
Catholic Church has room for one. We approved it.
On the altar?
Yeah, on the, on the thing, well, and out at Lockwood.
On Lockwood Campus.
Lockwood Campus.
Why?
They might as well put it, they might as well put it where the school was gonna go, cause I don't think that's ever gonna happen.
Alright, so what's the, so, alright-
Right, 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 right next to the statue. No? Is that too much, Bob?
Okay.
We got our laundry garden, just now put the, start plots.
But just remember too, the Facebook thing, and even I got back on, because I'm finding out I'm missing things, but if you, if you all notice, I'm very careful on that Facebook page, I'm not getting involved-
Oh no, nobody has her crug locked down like she does.
No, nobody has mine is locked down, I'm not getting involved, and if anybody-
I keep Lonnie awake at night.
Well, I am not getting involved, if somebody reaches out to me on Facebook and asks me a question, I'm not gonna respond. I'm gonna say, "Here's my phone number," all this crap that goes on on Facebook that I have seen through the years, it should have been answered very simply. Here is, well, whatever, it should have been answered, "Here's my number, call me and we will talk about it." This back and forth on that is ridiculous, so I put it on so I can see my, my nephews and my nieces and, and people that I, I want to converse with, be very careful with Facebook, it's a public record. So if you create stuff, you gotta give it all to Barbara.
It is a public record.
Right.
So now, now I've got a segmented personality thing going on.
Right, but just, just, just be careful what, what you do there, so, but, uh, in, in the end, if you decide you want to do this, I mean, I, I didn't say, I didn't say you can't, if you want to go out and make this Facebook event, have at it. All I would just say is just be careful, it's not the way we've always done it, it, it tends to, to bite you on the behind when one is there, and it's just, I wouldn't do it.
My, my biggest fear is that there's, you know, you, you going out there on your own in some Facebook event, even if you say, "These are my own opinions," comes representative of all of us.
Exactly.
And, and, and I know you can, you know, say it to, you're, you're blue in the face, but when people see one council member, they, they link us all together. So, to-
We kind of look at the personalities involved too. I pretend to just have people come over and hang out.
But that, but that's, and that's fine, I mean, we all have our circle, we all have our circle of friends.
And I'm too lazy to call them, so I just put it on Facebook, and if new people show up, that's just kinda how I work, so, there's consensus that that-
But that's a, that's-
As long as I don't say, "And we're gonna talk about city stuff."
I, 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 I wouldn't do Facebook events.
Well, not for it.
You can have a Friday nibbles like Shank has, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, if you want to have friends come over, have friends come over as a, as an, you know, however you want to do it.
For years on end though, I think, don't even care.
You know what the policy, you know what the best policy-
But you're elected now.
I know, that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to-
Megan, you know the best thing, the best thing I could tell you is, is that whenever we, whenever you're talking city business and you're having something official like that, when you notice it-
Not official.
Oh, I'm the same, when you-
If you notice it, it is official.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, when, if you-
That's what Lonnie is saying.
If you notice it, it's official, so the best thing to do is when we have a notice meeting, we're all together, let there be no doubt on where we're going and what we're trying to do, that's the only thing. I, for lack of a better word, we're just trying to keep you out of trouble.
I appreciate that.
Because we've, we've all seen it, and I, and let me tell you, I've seen it backfire on a certain individual really bad, and it did not go over well, you know all about it, it didn't go over well, and we've taken years to do that. So I guess, the question I have, because we can make decisions here, well, are we going to maintain the policy so we're clear that our town hall meetings and our official meetings will be done with the five of them? That is my question, motion, whatever, and I say, we keep it the way it is.
Well, the, the, the issue, the issue I have is, well, what you're trying, what's your definition? Cause I don't think you're trying to have a town hall meeting.
Oh, not really.
I don't think you're trying to-
I'm trying to have dinner.
You're, you're, you're just having friends over.
Yeah, but, but the, the definition of who's my friend is, anybody who happens to see this thing I posted on Facebook.
Okay, see, that's, that's where it ends, you can't post it on Facebook.
But I always have done that.
Well-
And gotten together with people, so, and then you get back to Donald Trump.
This thing called the win god way.
The fourth time, so, not the dinner, anything, you said, you're now you're elected. So when you do post it, and it is because you're elected, that you're interested in the input, that triggers everything.
Okay, well, take out the part that I'm not-
Can you, can you, hang on a minute?
Okay.
But if you want to have your group of friends over, not announce, come see me, come on a subscription group or whatever, just want to have your group of friends over, and they bring somebody else, that's fine, but it's not like-
That's, it's, okay, that's, all I need to know, I know how to proceed.
But not to notice it, saying, "Here I am on this time, this day," or whatever, you kind of talk to me about city business.
Yeah, the, the, the city, the city business-
I just don't want to be creepy and like, stop doing whatever I've done.
Yeah, the city business stuff is, is the issue, when you, when you say, "Come talk to me about city business," that's, to me, that's when it becomes more of a, you know, okay, I'm noticing, I'm-
And that's what the emails were.
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
We'll kick it down, we'll kick it down enough, so that pictures-
You go to Brian's point too, when you, when the "you" becomes the "public," that creates Brian a big problem.
I mean, cause we all, I mean, we all get questions all the time, you run into people at church or at the grocery store, people are gonna have questions, and, you know, and, and that's-
Try ushering, handing out bulletins and answering questions about the city, as everyone's leaving church.
And you know the one thing I want to tell you?
I, I finally got fingerprinted, I felt that on, on Saturday night.
There you go.
Don't ever lose your individuality and your, and your own opinions. If someone walks up to you in Publix and you don't like that golf course, nope, sorry, that's the way they voted? I didn't vote that way, but this is our system here, we all voted. Um, don't, don't get on the train just to ride it. You, you both got elected because you told the public-
Vote Harvard, you mean?
Yeah, you, 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 you both told the public what you wanted to do, and you both had pretty significant wins, so that gives you, uh, you know, some political capital to, to, to speak your mind and try to, you know, affect the change and the, and the vision, so to speak, on how this city is developed. Because certainly, this city today certainly has a stamp of Pessam Pierre, Hankin, Britton, Shank, uh, Perez, goes back all the way, and you two are gonna have that stuff. And, and the way that comes is when you're sitting up there, hey, I got this idea. Alright, let's just use, cause we had an event last night, tornado sirens. When I brought that up, everybody was like, "You're nuts, I went on Fox Five and the guy from Seminole County's telling me it's a waste of time." Really? Okay, well, those weather radios didn't go off three times on, on multiple tornado events, guess what? Our sirens were blaring. So that was something that I championed, it went through, everybody got on it and it worked. You guys are gonna have those days, you're, you're, you're all gonna come up with something. Hey, that was Megan's legislation and she got it through, but the way to get it done correctly and where it's more respected and recognized is when you're up there and doing it. When you try to do it behind, you know, behind the, the cameras, it, it doesn't work out good. But having said all that, when I'm in Publix or anywhere and someone comes up to me, "Hey, what do you think about, uh, that, that situation?" Oh, I will tell them right there what it is, I'm having a meeting, and don't ever lose that, because once you lose that and you start falling in line and you're doing what people tell you and what, you know, it doesn't make you feel comfortable, speak from the heart, but it does come a time, I think, and this is why I called this meeting, because the emails between you and Brian and Lonnie were starting to really touch on, alright, council members need to ought steer clear of where I'm gonna be tonight, I mean, and then we gotta do this great, you know, let them hear it through, it, it was going, the envelope was being pushed and I just felt like we were all gonna suffer for it.
The lawyer in you is coming now.
The lo, the lawyer in you, it was, it was coming out, but-
How do I get around it, not how do I talk to my, how do I get to my fellow members about it?
Right.
You're, yeah, you're, and I think all you want to do is just have-
Continue life as before, mainly, and-
Good luck.
But you, but if someone-
So people may, like, the same group of people may show up for coffee and maybe they'll talk about city stuff, maybe they won't.
Just remember, everything is different. I mean, I know that sounds silly.
I'm gonna turn to a creep just because I'm a politician now, so.
That's not, that's not being a creep though, that's-
It, it's just that, you know, you have, you have four other members that you have to work with, you got a staff you gotta work with, you got public records you gotta work with, you have things that get misinterpreted when you say it. You know, because even sometimes I'll go out to a State of the City and I'll say something, and people will misinterpret it. I mean, it happens, you know, and then, you know, they're emailing them about, you know-
What is invisible?
You and I know more than, you and I know more than anything about being misinterpreted after this election.
I knew her at the last State of the City, it was very bland, not bland, but it was just a matter of fact, it was everything that has been discussed up there is what I speak of at these things. When I get asked an opinion, you notice I pause, and my answer is what we've all discussed up here. Because, you know, anything else just gets us in trouble.
Yeah, I mean, you may want to just, you know, hey, I'm having dinner tonight, you call up your ten best friends, you call them on the phone, "I'm having dinner tonight," stuff always comes up, but, you know, be careful if one of us were around, you know, because we could be one of your friends at that dinner, you know, and stuff comes up. I mean, I mean, I know when I'm out, if any of these guys are in, in, within earshot of me and something is up, hey, ask me outside, you know, and you try to, you try, you try to do that.
And, and that's a good point, but, you know, there's also the fact that, you know, there's nothing in sunshine law that says that we can't be together, but we can't go to a baseball game together, football game.
That happens all the time.
We can't go, you know, we do that all the time, I mean, because we just actually become friends spending all this time together, because we spend more time together sometimes than we do with our families. But, you know, the point is this, is that, you know, then we're just friends, then we're just having a beer, doing whatever, and we're not talking about this, it's the last thing we want to talk about, I mean-
Hey, you guys came into a very well-run city, a very well-run, and you knew this, cause you've been here, you came in-
How many times have you and I been together someplace where somebody will start talking about something and one or the other will say, "We're out of here," you know, and, uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm going over there, and we just go the other way, and just, you know, go ahead, you beat Keith up for a change, I could beat up all the time.
From where we are, from where we are today as a, as a city council and, and as a staff and everything, to the way we were fifteen, twenty years ago, it's not even close. I mean, people back then were winging stuff, making decisions without involving the public and, you know, things just happened that, you know, that's why I got in. I mean, I'll be very honest, and you go look at those old newspaper clippings, I got, I came up here because the city, in my opinion, at that time, not so much the staff, but certain people up here were out of control, they were doing things that the public didn't appreciate, and that's what we're trying to guard against, that, that they never lose the confidence.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, what I'm hearing is we're gonna keep town hall meetings advertised, meetings amongst all the members.
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna go do the State of the City, see how it goes, and then we might have another town hall meeting for the second quarter, because this one will be the first quarter.
Just a town hall, right?
Just a town.
Yeah, we'll see how-
We'll see how it goes, see how many ways.
And you're gonna go hang out with your friends.
I'm gonna go hang out with friends, and just to clarify, if I say, "Hey, friends who like to talk about water, this is bad, or is this okay?"
If it's policy related-
Hey, see, you're trying to skirt around it.
I'm just wondering, is it-
If you're just hanging out and a question comes up, that's one thing, but if you're, if you're talking-
Let Brian answer it.
Help me here, if I can't do it, I can't do it.
What is it that you want an answer to?
Okay, so here, here's how it's all, here's what made the whole thing start.
Alright, good, so what's the pressing issue?
Okay, so the whole thing is, there are a couple people who are my water peeps. I've talked about water quality within probably fifteen years, and before getting elected, different things around all around the state, we, and so, some are from Lake Erie, some are from Carly. But I thought, oh, wouldn't it be great to meet these people together, and I thought, well, I can meet like fifteen other people who'd be as bad. And then I thought, well, I should have a radio, but then I don't want to just say, well, only these people are high, because that's kind of a cookie, it's a pretty thing, uh, so-
Now you're talking about, you're talking about water like a drink.
But now you're bending it back into a town hall.
I know, so it's back to that, yeah, so, so we can't go that direction. So do smaller things with people-
The "you," the "you," the "you," or "them," the "them" just got undefined, except to say it's everybody, and everybody means the public, so it got right back to there, so that's-
Yeah, well, we're the friends of our friends, because you have to know them too.
The best thing is, I think you said, invite a few friends over and maybe, if you say, bring somebody else with you, if you want to, that's general enough that you're not inviting the entire public. But it's up to them.
Mr. Britton brought up a good one, Mr. Shank, they have their first Friday nibbles, and it, they do it through eVite, and it is a group of people, they invite them, it's, you tell them whether or not you're gonna come or not, just so they can plan. There's no agenda. You can talk about anything you want, I know a couple of times I went, he was, he was actually in the room watching lacrosse games. Um, other folks were just in the kitchen around the food, he'd bring food, you know, and it was just a conversation amongst friends. It wasn't about whether or not, you know, it wasn't about a topic of any sport.
So that is, you don't have to be nervous then?
No, nope.
He did it eVite, he did an eVite, and he just called it, and he just calls it Friday nibbles.
First Friday nibbles.
First Friday of the month, and people just show up and just talk. Now, I will tell you, there have been times at that event where multiple of us are there, but we're all good enough now. We don't, nobody, nobody-
We don't, we don't, we don't talk policy.
We, we don't, we're talking about vacations and cruises and football and stuff like that, that may be your, your avenue. But really, when you leave here tonight, just from me to you, because I know sometimes, when I came up here, and you'll remember this, I sat right over there, I looked down, I said, "Look, this fire department is messed up and we're not losing any people," and like, they're looking at me going, "Yeah, whatever," and blew me off. Nobody's blowing you off, I want nothing more. It's kind of like what, what, what you said about the election and what's been out there. Look, if this plane crashes, we all crash, so we want you both and, and the three of us to continue to do great things.